Good afternoon. Bob Harbin, I'd like to welcome all of our guests this afternoon to Poptown Christian Church. Poptown Players started their first productions here just a few years ago. They're composed with a group of our church folks who enjoy acting and sometimes acting up. They have a lot of fun with this and they're transporting you this afternoon to the town of Town, Wisconsin, where the Town Council will be meeting. I think that you'll recognize some folks as you observe this play. Now, understand, you will not recognize yourself because you would not act this way. But you will recognize one of the people sitting beside you because they might act this way. You just never know. You've got to watch it. But if you've ever been in a church board meeting, or a community group meeting, or a civic group board meeting, or club meeting, you'll see some of the actions and reactions and misactions of some of the folks there. And we hope that you enjoy it. The cast has had a great time preparing for this play and we hope that you have as much fun with it as they've had. Right now, I'd like to introduce you to Matt Sharp, our director and all-around play person. Come on, Matt.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the Poptown Players' production of Town Council. Now, the setting for this play is in the basement of a church, or the basement of the local American Legion Hall Elementary School. It's your choice. You decide in your mind. This is a fairly recent play. It was just first published in 2008. And in fact, the Poptown Players are only in the third theatrical troupe to perform this play. It takes place in the town of Town, Wisconsin, which is not unlike any other small town in the United States here in North Carolina, or Poptown. My family and I, we moved here to Poptown about a little over five years ago. And since we've lived here, we have learned many, many new terms, new sayings, new pronunciations. And some have made me laugh, some have made me really work my brain to try to figure out what it is that you guys are referring to. So I started keeping a log and I thought I'd share some of these terms with you tonight. Okay, here's one for you. Have you ever asked someone, "How are you doing today?" You may respond, "Not so good. I had a bump up." And what I've learned is, it's not acne, and it's not a boil, it's a fender bender, or minor car accident. There's one I've learned. Here's another one. Who's familiar with a hosepipe? "What are you doing?" "I'm going to wash my car. You better get your hosepipe." So, I have thought on this one. And what I figured out is, I believe a hosepipe is the garden hose, or it's the outdoor faucet, or maybe, which makes more sense to me, it's the actual term for the combination of the hose connected to the outdoor faucet, and that becomes the hosepipe. Also learning that you mash a button, that you smash potatoes. Now, here's one that makes me think a whole lot. Have you ever had someone say to you, "Okay, take that pimento cheese sandwich and cut it half in two." So, you want it half, and then two, right? So you want four pieces, right? "No, I want two." Okay. Now, here's one that my family and I read here daily. Everyone says it. And the terms are "get gone" and "got gone." But it's pronounced "get gone" and "got gone." Let me use it in a sentence. Well, they're on sale. Get yourself over to Roses and get you some before they get gone. Did you get some? No. By the time I got there, they all got gone. That, honest to goodness, we have never heard that until we moved here. But I have heard of the term "y'all," right? But did you know the plural for "y'all" is "all y'all"? And another phenomenon here is the ability to take a name that's this short and extend it this long. And on the other hand, take a name that's this long and make it this short. For example, our Minister of Music, his name is Tim, but it's pronounced "Tiam." And there's another name like Gerald, but it's pronounced "Gerald." Right in? Okay. That's off of my terms. So tonight, let me go over some housekeeping. Please, as the announcer said, make sure your cellphone is off. And if, well, if your phone does ring somehow and it's Mother Nature calling and you have to answer it, the restroom is found to your right. There's a door here, and take the immediate left and you'll find the restroom. And I have heard that there are fifty ways to leave your locker, but there are three quick ways out of this building. In case of emergency, exit out the double doors you came in from, or you can go through the kitchen here and you'll find another exit, or you can go around here behind the black curtain and you'll find the other exit. This play will last approximately thirty-five minutes, depending on how long and how much laughter you provide. And I guarantee you will laugh. When the play is over, before y'all get gone, why don't you stick around and thank the cast and congratulate them on how well they did. Appreciate that. Thank you very much and enjoy the show.
Look at that, Miss Takes!
What, sir?
That! Right there on my finger, don't you see that?
No, sir.
On your feet, soldier! Right there! There must be at least two millimeters of dust from those desks over there. How do you explain that, Corporal Takes? How do you account for that, Corporal?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor!
Mr. Mayor, sir!
You don't know? You don't know? It's your job to know! A Strategic Operations Center is an efficient well-oiled biting machine. And we are that well-oiled biting machine, a biting machine of government. And it's our job to keep that machine in tip-top shape. A dirty machine is no good. A dirty machine makes for dirty government. And we cannot tolerate dirty government here in the Town of Town. Have you got that, Corporal?
My name is Miss Takes.
Are you questioning me?
No, no, sir.
We are blessed. We are blessed by the citizens of this town who elected us. It's our job to look after them, to walk point. And watch out for those bureaucratic tripwires. We need to protect them. And to do that, you can set up a perimeter of concertina wire and claymores protecting the town-city limits against all the aggressors. I can see it. We'll be firmly entrenched and set up a field of suppressing fire to get rid of all those aggressors, be they out of work trailer trash, door-to-door solicitors, or those fat cat bureaucrats from the state capitol. And what do we need to do that job, soldier? I can't hear you!
A clean, well-oiled machine, sir.
That's right. Now, was that so hard?
No, sir.
At ease. I think I hear the rest of the troops coming.
As Council President, I'd kind of like to get the meeting started, you know?
Horrible situation, it was just horrible. Every time we come to this room...
In your seats!
They're all yours, General. Thank you. If I may, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Town Council to order. Thank you again, Mayor. No problem. Matt, let the minutes show that the special meeting of the Town Council to decide the future of our town park here in the Town of Town was called to order by me, Council President, Ivy Wishy-Washy, at seven AM on this February twenty-eighth of 2010.
Amendment.
Yeah? What?
I'd like to amend the opening statement.
All I said was...
Today is Fat Tuesday, and I think the opening statement should reflect that.
But the Town of Town doesn't even recognize Fat Tuesday.
I happen to think Fat Tuesday is an important day, and I want it so noted in the minutes. I also want it noted that because it is Fat Tuesday, I'm going to be late for a Mardi Gras party because of this special meeting, which could have been rescheduled.
I'm against that.
Against what, Mr. Royd?
Fat Tuesday. I'm against Fat Tuesday.
How can you be against Fat Tuesday? Are you against Fat Tuesday or just against having it in the minutes?
Both. I'm against anything that makes fun of fat people.
Well, my last husband was fat, and I made fun of him all the time.
Fat Tuesday does not make fun of fat people.
Huh. Fat Tuesday is a celebration held right before Lent. People go out, they party, and they eat and drink. A little excess, I might add.
Excess? How much is this going to cost?
What? How much is what going to cost?
Putting Fat Tuesday in the minutes, how much is this going to cost, Ivy?
Well, Titus, I don't think anyth... Well, maybe though, until... Maybe Miss Takes will have to use an extra piece of paper. In that event, the words, you know, the words might run too long for the minutes and go over to a second page.
How much is that extra piece of paper going to cost? That's a big town!
Well, Titus, well, you know, maybe two or three cents.
I'm against it! It's wasted, too big a risk.
Too big a risk? For Pete's sake, Titus Candy, it's a measly two cents.
Pete? Who is Pete? Burnout old hippie.
Burnout old hippie?
And you're a cheap old fart. Well, my second husband was a hippie. He had long hair, and he drove a Volkswagen bus with peace signs all over it.
Hippies? Peace signs?
Your second husband was a hippie?
Yeah, with gorgeous, long hair. He went to a rock concert one night, and he never came back.
Let's get back to the issue at hand, if we may. I'd like to leave it at reasonable time tonight. Ab, we haven't heard from you. What's your position on the issue?
My position? Well, I guess, I'm not sure. I may...
I call for a vote.
A vote? We haven't even officially opened the meeting yet.
A vote on whether to include Fat Tuesday in the opening statement of the minutes.
For Pete's sake, let's just vote.
Not you two! Who is Pete?
Okay, okay. Well, have a roll call vote. If you vote yes, that means they will add Fat Tuesday to the meeting dates. Miss Takes, will you call the roll call vote, please?
All right. Alderman Makin' Sense?
Yes.
Traitor!
Alderwoman Maryamaw? Yes.
Peace lover!
What? Alderman Herman Roy?
Nope.
That a boy, Herb!
Alderwoman Summer Love? Yes. Alderman Titus Candy?
No! Too expensive!
Alderman Abel Stan?
Well...
It's all up to you, Ab. No vote, and it's a tie.
Well, I think I need to disqualify myself in the vote.
Disqualify yourself? What for?
Well, I don't think I can vote fairly due to a conflict of interest.
A conflict of interest? What kind of conflict of interest?
Well, I once went to Mardi Gras.
So?
And I also ate too much one time on Fat Tuesday.
Who cares?
And I like hippies. And I had long hair one time, but my mom made me get it cut.
What's that got to do with anything?
You had long hair, Ab? Oh, that's kind of sexy.
Well, I don't think I can vote fairly, given the fact that I like Mardi Gras and Fat Tuesday, and hippies like summer.
And don't forget the long hair.
Oh, yeah, long hair, I like that too.
You devil, you. Would you like to come over to my house later?
Ab Stan, are you trying to say that you want to abstain?
Yeah, that's it, I want to abstain.
Why, you spineless, Mardi Gras parties, long-haired hippie lover!
Titus, calm down before you pop a blood vessel. Think about how much it'll cost you if we got to take you to the hospital.
Well, it's much like the... Yes votes have it then, with a vote of three to two and one abstention by Alderman Stan.
Wait a minute! What about you, Wishy-Washy? What's your vote?
I don't vote. The President, the Council only votes in the case of a tie.
Ha! Convenient for you, isn't it?
Let the minutes show that...
Not so fast! What about Mayor Killens?
Yeah. How do you vote, Seymour?
The mayor can't vote.
Sure he can! What's your vote, Mayor?
No. I vote no.
Ha! It's a tie.
Not so fast yourself. If the mayor can vote, so can Miss Takes.
She can't vote, she's the town clerk.
Well, sure she can. If the mayor has a vote, then so does the city clerk.
How do you vote, Miss Takes?
Well, I...
This ain't the Navy, Takes!
Yes, I vote yes.
Finally, the yeses have it four to three, so let's get on with tonight's meeting.
Okay. Let the minutes show that the special council meeting of the town was called to order by Council President Ivy Wishy-Washy at seven ten PM on Fat Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, 2010. Now, let's see. Let the record also show that in attendance were Alderman Titus Candy, Alderman Makin' Sense, Alderwoman Maryamaw, Alderman Herman Roy, Alderwoman Summer Love, and Alderman Abel Stan. And, let the record also show that the Honorable Mayor Seymour Killens was also here. You know, I was about to forget the minutes of the January meeting. We sent those out ten days ago, and you guys should have had a chance to review them. And if there are no objections, I'll entertain a motion that we approve those minutes as presented.
I object.
Objection? Why are you objecting, Porter?
Right here, in item thirteen. A motion was made by Alderwoman Maryamaw and seconded by Alderwoman Summer Loves that all monies retrieved by city staff when draining and cleaning the city swimming pool should be kept in a special fund, with said monies going to provide area-needy children with toys at Christmas time. The motion passed on a vote of four to two with Alderman Titus Candy and Alderman Herman Roy opposed. That right there, I'd like that stricken from the minutes.
Well, what would you like stricken from the minutes? That's exactly what happened.
The department says that I voted opposed. When you say it like that, it sounds like I don't like kids.
You did vote opposed, and you don't like kids.
I know that, but I don't want it written down so the whole town knows.
Me neither! I want my name stricken also!
But you voted opposed, and you don't like kids either.
I just don't like kids. I just don't want to give them any money!
I make a motion if the minutes stand approved as presented.
And I second.
A motion's been made and seconded, thank goodness, that the minutes of the January meeting of the Town of Town be approved as presented. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Let the minutes show that the motion was carried, and that the January meeting minutes were approved as presented.
Great. Not everyone in town will know I don't like kids.
Well, cheer up, they already knew.
Giving kids? What a waste of money!
Well, we have a very important agenda item tonight, so let's get on with it. I guess we'd best get started. Now, we have some citizens here to come in and address this group, but I thought it would be better that we talked it over before they came in.
Well, get on with it, Ivy. I've got a party to go to.
The town has received a proposal from a Mr. Richard Greenback to purchase the town property along the river, proposing to buy the property from the town for the purpose of building condos on the land fronting the river.
Townhouses!
What?
They're called townhouses, not condos!
What's the difference?
Not really, it's all semantics.
Sure there is. Townhouses are built in town. Condos are built someplace else. This being the Town of Town, townhouses perfect!
Well, that's just stupid.
Calling me stupid?
If the shoe fits!
You old hippie, we're not talking about shoes, we're talking about townhouses!
There here, if we can get back to the issue, please.
You're getting all your mushrooms! You go home and take a bath, you old hippie!
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, Mr. President, do you want me to include "Are you calling me stupid?" and "If the shoe fits?" in the minutes?
No, don't put anything about old hippie and calling people stupid or anything about shoes in the minutes.
What not? She is an old hippie!
And you are stupid.
That's okay. I really don't think the town needs to know that. They already know. I demand that everything that is said be put in the minutes. It's SOP. That's standard operating procedure. All right, Miss Takes. All right. Put in the minutes that Alderwoman Summer Love called Alderman Titus Candy stupid, and that Alderman Titus Candy called Alderwoman Summer Love an old hippie. And in both cases, the shoe fits.
Are you sure?
What's that, Corporal? Are you questioning orders?
No, no, I...
I what?
I aye, sir.
This ain't the Navy, Takes!
No, no, sir, I'll put it all in.
That's more like it, soldier.
But I'm not a...
Wait a minute, Miss Takes, thank you very much. Now, if we can continue, let's move on.
Well, excuse me, but I think Titus is stupid also. Can I get my name put in the minutes with Summers?
Now, does anyone in this Town Council have anything intelligent to say about the issue at hand before I invite Mr. Greenback and the citizens in to take the floor?
How much is he willing to pay, Ivy?
Well, Titus, in my conversation with Mr. Greenback, he cited that we are having increasing costs of mowing the lawn and fixing the park benches and the general maintenance costs. And he was hopeful that we would see fit to divest that park over to him for the sum of one dollar, and so he could get on with building his condos.
Townhouses!
Well, and townhouses, but we then could get a tax levied on the new townhouses and condos, and it would benefit the community.
What a crock!
What did you call me?
Mr. President, do you want me to put "what a crock" in the minutes?
Everything, Takes!
Just asking.
Yes, Miss Takes. Let's put everything in the minutes from now on.
Yes, sir.
Well, Greenback is a crook. He's just...
Greenback is a crook! Wait, 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 don't put that in the minutes. But Mr. Wishy-Washy said to put everything in.
Well, don't put that. I don't want Greenback thinking that I think he's a crook.
What not? You do think he's a crook!
I know, but...
Put it in, Corporal Takes!
Mr. President?
Are you questioning a direct order?
No, no, sir.
Put it in! It's a crock, and Greenback's a crook. Put it all in!
For the love of Pete!
Pete again! Who's Pete?
Okay, what about Pete? Do I have to put Pete in the minutes?
Everything, Takes!
Okay. I have a letter here from Mrs. Ima Starvin. She was centenarian who, um...
A centenarian? What kind of hippie commie do you think the organization is that?
Commies! Nazis, let me in!
Nazi hippies, flower-powered commies, right here in town!
Well, you three calm down. Ima Starvin is just a hundred years old.
So? That doesn't give her the right to belong to some subversive, anti-American group, no-good centenarians?
no-good centenarians?
Right, don't forget the hippies!
Well, idiots, a centenarian is just a person who has reached the age of one hundred years old, and that's all.
So, she's not a commie?
Well, I don't think so.
But you can't be sure. Maybe being a centenarian is just a cover.
Might I interrupt? Ima Starvin is a widow and a lifelong resident of this town. She survives solely on her social security check. She is not a commie. She lives right next to the park, and the town will have to condemn her property to the Greenback to build his condos.
Townhouses! I say we get on with it. I make a motion that we condemn her property so Greenback can put up his condos, or townhouses, and we can start taxing them.
Not so fast. I have a letter here from Mrs. Starvin. Dear Town Council, my name is Ima Starvin, and my family has owned the house next to the town park for over one hundred years. I am one hundred and one years old myself and have never lived anywhere else. I'm not against progress, but would ask that the council not condemn my property and allow me to live out my final days there.
Oh, the God!
Who does she think she is?
If the Town Council will allow me to remain in my home, I will deed the property to the town upon my passing. I hope this will be all right. Sincerely, Ima Starvin.
Greenback needs that property now for access to his condos.
Townhouses! I make a motion that we condemn her property and put her in a home.
Well, she is in a home, and it's hers. And you want to kick her out of it?
I made a motion!
A motion has been made to condemn the Starvin property. Do I hear a second? Second? You can't second, you're the mayor. Can too.
Cannot.
Can too. I got to vote earlier.
And that doesn't make it right.
No, your voting was a mistake.
What? What did you say, soldier?
I think-
Okay then, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We condemn the Starvin house. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stop! All those opposed?
We have citizens waiting outside to speak on this very issue. I only think it's fair that we have them brought into council chambers so we can hear what they have to say.
Well, I don't know, but-
Why? We're wasting time. I say we vote.
And I think we need to hear what the citizens have to say so we can get our facts straight.
Why?
Yeah, why? We never listened to what the town citizens had to say before.
So we can make an educated decision.
We've never made an educated decision before.
No kidding.
For the love of Pete.
For the love of Pete! For the love of Pete! People are all crazy. I'm going home for Pete's sake!
Idiot.
Hippie!
Ivy, we have citizens who are here to speak on this issue. I think it's only fair that we bring them in to hear what they have to say.
Well, you know, we have, Titus made a motion, and there's a motion on the floor.
Get him to rescind his motion.
What does that mean?
Take it back.
I'm not taking anything back, you old hippie.
So now what? Are we gonna listen to Greenback and the citizens or not?
Titus?
I'm not taking back my motion. But, I'll put it on hold.
Hold? What does that mean?
It means that after we listen to the citizens, we vote on my original motion!
Well, Miss Takes, will you read the original motion?
I know what my motion was!
Me too. Nevertheless, Miss Takes, read back his original motion.
Motion made by Alderman Titus Canby to condemn the Starvin property and put the old lady in a home. The motion was seconded by Mayor Seymour Killens, and after discussion as to whether the mayor could second a motion, the motion was re-seconded by Alderman Hermroy.
Thank you, Miss Takes. So, Titus, what if you change your mind after hearing what the citizens have to say on the issue?
I won't change my mind. My mind is beat up.
Mine too.
We're wasting time, Ivy.
All right, I guess it won't hurt to listen to what they have to say. Let's bring them in.
I'm not listening.
Me neither.
Miss Takes, will you go out and call to them in the hall? Come in now. Thank you.
You can all come in now.
Why? She said we can all come in now!
That's our bad town.
Ruh, ruh! Young people are in such a hurry. Hey, hey! Aren't you just alike, small boys? Did you cry or get out of prison? Still there, I'm sorry. We're praying. Tell him Ida and I'm are praying. Flash your heart. Flash your heart. What a crowd it is now! Oh, it's Eloise, Bob! Yeah, Eloise. We heard you had to work on your face. I know, I don't agree with the town, honey. You're almost free. Question what? We're praying. Oh, I have a leg! Pete, come here! Pete! We hear our people's here, Ivy! I want to get rid of the old lady! Ivy, I hate yours now! We hear ya. Just put up! Hey, good man!
Well, welcome to the town council meeting. I think we're about ready. I'd like for each of you to stand up and tell us who you are and what your business is here tonight.
Hello. My name is Dewey Cheetah.
What was I getting by his name?
Cheetah! Dewey Cheetah!
That's a funny name.
I beg your pardon?
What'd she say? She begs your pardon? That's quite all right, young lady. You go right ahead with what you were saying. You don't have to apologize for your name.
As I was saying, my name is Dewey Cheetah, and I have an attorney with the law firm of Cheetah and Howe. Mr. Richard Greenback. And I'm here tonight to answer any legal questions that you may have about Rich's project to build condos.
Townhouses.
Oh, what's the difference?
Well, not really, it's just that-
Sure there is. Townhouses are built in town. Condos are built...someplace else.
Rich, why don't you follow?
Well, my name is Richard Greenback, and, well, I think most of you know me as Rich. Anyway, we're right to the point. I'm here tonight to do the fair taxpayers of town a favor.
Well, you see there? Rich here just wants to do us all a favor. Now can we vote?
Not yet. Please continue, Mr. Greenback. Thank you. As a matter of fact, as I was saying, I know how financially pressed the town must be with the high cost of fuel and the high cost of maintenance. So, I'm offering to take the town park off the city's hands to ease up money for other infrastructures.
And just how much are you willing to pay us to free us of the hardship of the park?
Well, as I was telling Mr. Wishiwashi-
What Mr. Greenback means to say is that he does not expect any compensation for his generous offer of relieving the town of the burden of the park.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm willing to pay the town the sum of one dollar to help with the paperwork and to transfer a deed.
What'd he say?
I've got the paperwork drawn up right here.
Now can we vote? Cheetah's got the paperwork already drawn up. I made a motion!
Excuse me. If you would, if Mr. Canby would amend his motion-
Mr. Greenback, he just offered to buy the park for one dollar.
Well, isn't that nice? I didn't know the park was for sale. I've got a dollar! I bought a park. It's right next to my house, you know?
That's a great idea. If we're gonna sell the park, why don't we sell it to Mrs. Starvin?
I agree. Sell the park to Ima.
No.
Why not?
Because she is gonna be able to put up a bunch of condos and make the town a bunch of money.
I thought you said townhouses.
What?
Townhouses. You said they were called townhouses, not condos.
What's the difference?
That's what I wanna know. Titus said townhouses are built in town, and condos are built someplace else.
Mr. President, do you want me to refer to Mr. Greenback's buildings as condos or townhouses?
Townhouses!
Use townhouses, Miss Takes.
I've got a house in town!
I know!
It's next to the park!
Yes, it is!
Condos is a shorter word, though.
Are you questioning a direct order?
No, no.
Townhouses it is.
Well, I made a motion. I moved that we condemn the Starvin property and put that old lady in a home.
Is it time to go home? Yeah!
I've got all the paperwork drawn up right here. All it needs is the signature of the council president.
Get on with it, Wishiwashi puts all-
The council president can't sign anything without a majority vote from the council.
That's right. It's SOP.
Did he say SOP?
It's standard operating procedure.
No, we know, you said it before. Now can we vote? I made a motion!
Before you vote, I want all you fine council members to know that should you vote in favor of my condos and putting the old woman in a home, I'm willing to offer the city, the council members, a five percent discount toward the purchase price of one of my condos.
Well, that's great. That sounds like a good deal for all of us. Now can we vote?
Well, it sounds crooked to me.
And me too.
Really crooked.
Well, if all of you council members and Mr. Canby would amend his motion to include selling me the town park for the sum of one dollar, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Killing birds! I'll go get a shotgun!
Wait a minute, wait, whoa, whoa, sit down, sit down. Killing birds with the one stone is just a figure of speech for- Getting two things done at once. So we ain't going hunting?
No, unfortunately.
But we're gonna have to take up Titus's motion. Now, Miss Takes, will you read back the original motion of Alderman Canby?
A motion was made by Alderman Titus Canby to condemn the Starvin property and put the old lady in a home. The motion was seconded by Hermroy.
I'll amend my motion. I move that we condemn the Starvin property, put the old lady in a home, and sell the town park to Rich Greenback for one dollar so he can build his condos.
Townhouses.
Right, townhouses.
I second.
Well, now, before you vote, just remember, I'm offering you a five percent discount toward the purchase price of one of my condos, should you vote in favor of my condos.
Now can we vote?
We have a motion and a second to condemn the Starvin house and put the old lady in a home, and then sell the town park to Mr. Greenback for one dollar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Wait a minute. Abd it and vote again.
That's right. How do you vote, Steen?
Well... I think I have to abstain.
Again? Why you?
Why, I have a conflict of interest, I think.
What kind of conflict of interest do you have this time, Ab?
Well, I happen to live in a condo.
So?
And Titus said condos are built someplace else, and townhouses are built in town. And my condo's in town, but I don't want it to be called a townhouse. I don't think I can vote fairly.
I wanna come over here.
And I also like little old ladies like Ivy.
You like little old ladies and hippies? Why add you sexy that far?
If it's a tie, Wishiwashi, you have to vote. As council president, it's your job to break the tie.
Well, I don't know about that.
Aye.
What? You can't vote?
I vote opposed.
You can't vote? You're just a town clerk.
I got to vote last time.
Well, this time is different. You can't vote this time.
Oh, yes you can. And the vote is four to three opposed.
Tell Takes you can't vote, Ivy. You're the council president!
Well, I don't know about that.
Quit scolling, Wishiwashi.
If Miss Takes can't vote, then it's a tie, and as president, you'll cast the deciding vote, Ivy.
Me?
I vote aye.
It will all be on your shoulders.
My shoulders? Well, in that case, I think she can vote. Motion is defeated on a vote of forty-three.
What?
What?
Look at her.
Why, they're all against us, the long-haired hippie lovers, right down to the no-good commie neo-Nazi centenarians.
The motion is defeated. Now I will entertain a motion to allow Mrs. Starvin to stay in her home until her death or until such time that she might decide to deed her property over to the town, at which time, we will consider Mr. Greenback's offer to build his condos.
Townhouses!
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's not fair. Abd it and vote.
Meeting adjourned. On your feet! Dismissed! Lousy commies.
Don't forget the hippies!
What's a centenarian?
Great, there's still time for me to make my Mardi Brot party. Does anybody wanna go with me?
Oh, I do, I do. Hey, Aunt Honey! Don't you wanna have a Mardi Brot party with me?
I, uh, don't-
Yeah, I know. I even have a lava lamp I can bring. Lava! Is that volcano rocking you? No, not the volcano. I'm taking you home. Honey, put your clothes on. Home! I want it right next to the park, you know?
Yes, we do!
...